This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Benjamin?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Kristofferson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Here.
Lohr?
Yeah.
Well?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Thank you, and again, good afternoon. First of all, I want to welcome family and friends, residents, and staff members that are here celebrating with us this afternoon for this special occasion. Secondly, I'd like to welcome and congratulate, with all sincerity, our newly-elected at-large city councilmembers and our newly-re-elected at-large city councilmembers. This is a proud moment for you, an exciting moment. This community has elected you to represent them, and that is quite an honor. I hope that the next three years is an incredible experience for you and for this body. I also like to recognize and thank our current district councilmembers. You are now the foundation of this council, or part of the foundation of this council, and I know that our new councilmembers will look to you for support over these next few months and throughout the next year, and I'm certain that you'll be there for them. I'm excited for this next year and honored to serve with all of you. It is a new beginning, and I feel confident that great things will come of our work together as a body serving this city. Thank you all for your devotion and your commitment to the City of Eau Claire, and I wish us all an enjoyable evening and afternoon together celebrating this event. So with that, we will get started with the swearing-in. And Judge Long is here, I'm told. What do you want?
I, Terry Weld.
I, Terry Weld.
Having been elected president of the Eau Claire City Council.
Having been elected of the Eau Claire City Council Preso- having been elected president of the Eau Claire City Council.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Kate Beaton.
I, Kate Beaton.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Laura Benjamin.
I, Laura Benjamin.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the responsibilities of that office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Catherine Emanuel.
I, Catherine Emanuel.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, David Klinkhammer.
I, David Klinkhammer.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities.
Will faithfully discharge the responsibilities of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to have my family come here, can I?
Absolutely. You, you, Mom, Tom, Tom. You have to hand up all the phones. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Lohr.
I, John Lohr.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Having elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will defend and support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. And will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Again, congratulations to all our new city councilmembers and our current city councilmembers, and as I mentioned earlier, I hope you enjoy this whole experience today and these next 12 months together. So with that, we'll get started, and our first order of business is the election of a council vice president. Vice president serves a one-year term, being elected by the council every April at the organizational meeting. The sole duty of the vice president is preside over the council meetings in the event of the president's absence. Vice president is elected by a secret ballot. Nominations are taken from the floor with no second required. The nominee must agree to the nomination. The presiding officer will ask three times for nominations. Once nominations are closed, nominees may speak to their nomination. Ballots will be distributed. Councilmembers will vote for one candidate. Ballots will be collected and counted by the city attorney and the city clerk. The city clerk will announce the results of the voting. A nominee needs six votes to win. If only one nomination is received, the presiding officer will seek a motion to cast a unanimous Are there any questions? Seeing none? The floor is open for nominations. Councilmember Worthman.
Council President Weld, I'd like to nominate a councilperson, councilmember Catherine Emanuel.
Okay. Councilmember Catherine Emanuel has been nominated for vice president. Is there, are there any other nominations? Councilmember Lohr?
I want to nominate councilmember Dave Klinkhammer.
Councilmember David Klinkhammer has been nominated for vice president. Are there any other nominations? Again, I'll ask, are there any other nominations? And one last time, I'll ask, are there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none? Clerk will hand out the ballots. I'm sorry. Each candidate has an opportunity to speak. So councilmember Emanuel, did you want to?
Thank you, President Weld.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Worthman, for nominating me. I consider that a real honor, and what I'd like to offer is really a type of bridge leadership for the vice presidency. I see that the opportunity to continue to serve and help lift up the newness of our body is necessary, and it's not a one-way street, it's a multiple-way street of helping each other. And so I think that I have experience of some context from the past, not everything, but some context from the past, and have embraced and supported new colleagues as they've joined our organization. And so the type of leadership I would like to offer is to, one, first and foremost, is support you in being successful in your role as an elected here in the community. Second, as you probably know, I really do care about process, so helping us figure out what that looks like to make sure it's transparent and reflects democratic principles of good governance, good local governance. And third, to help each other find joy, myself included, all of you included. It's a hard job. I think in all of the years, I've probably received less than five thank-you notes, not that that's our fuel to continue on, and it's often a thankless job, and so I'd like to encourage all of us to find the joy in our work, to make local government a place that people want to be at, a place that people feel welcomed at. So if you vote for me, that's the type of leadership I'd like to help contribute, in addition to helping our new council president to be successful in his role. And if any one of us are successful, that means our community is successful, and that's why we're here. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. Councilmember Worthman, did you want to speak? Anyone else that would like to speak in behalf of Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Haven't thought this far ahead yet. I appreciate being nominated. I sought this nomination primarily because of many of the reasons that Councilmember Emanuel was stating about supporting you as a new president. I like to think that I bring a different perspective and a lot of experience to that end, and I'd appreciate everyone's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of Councilmember Klinkhammer? Seeing none, then we'll close that, and City Clerk, if you would pass out the ballots. Again, you can vote for one person. Six votes are necessary to elect a city council vice president.
Councilmember Emanuel received eight votes, and Councilmember Klinkhammer received three votes.
Congratulations, Councilmember Emanuel has been elected as our city council vice president. So next, and a big part of this organizational meeting is the selection of our councilmembers that will serve on various commissions and boards and committees within and throughout our community. The councilmembers have had a couple of days to look over the options and availability, and with certainly weighing in their interests and strengths and meeting times and days have decided or chosen what commissions and boards they have a great deal of interest in and are willing to serve as. Appointments for these commissions and boards are a one-year appointment. They'll change every April, as we are here today. In the councilmembers' packets, they have information there regarding the times and days of the meetings, and certainly those will be helpful throughout this meeting as we go through it. In regards to the process, I'll just go through this so that we all have a clear understanding. Appointments are filled on boards and commissions using the chart before you, which councilmembers have filled out prior to this meeting. The names of everyone who indicated an interest is listed. The list of boards and commissions is in alphabetical order. I will offer each appointment one at a time. I will then ask any councilmembers if they wish to remove their name for consideration. I will also ask then if there are any councilmembers that wish to add their name for their consideration. A nomination is not necessary to add your name. Once the list of candidates is in order for the first board or commission, councilmembers will speak to their interests and qualifications. Others may speak for them as well. Once speaking has ceased, balloting begins. The chair will announce how many votes councilmembers may cast. For example, when there are two members that serve on a commission, then each councilmember will have two votes during that process. Each name is announced by the city clerk. Cast a ballot for the person named by raising our hand. Leave it raised until the city clerk has counted the votes. Most appointments will require six votes to win. Plan commission will require eight votes to win, and the RDA will require nine votes to win. On the first round, those who have earned the required number of votes will be appointed. If there are appointments yet to fill that board, those who earn less than the required number move to the second round. On the second round, again, candidates are invited to speak if they choose to, balloting by show of hands. Those who earn the required number of votes are appointed. Those who earn less than the required number of votes move to the third round, and so on. Balloting will continue until the proper number of each appointment is elected for the proper number of votes, by the proper number of votes. We'll continue down the list, one at a time, until all the appointments are filled. And again, in the event that there's only one nomination for the commissioner board, I will seek a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for the one candidate. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, then we will get started. First committee is the advisory committee on appointments, and generally, it's been the three representatives that serve on this advisory committee, and it has been in the past, one of those positions is held by the city council president, so then there will be two seats available to serve on this committee. And right now, we, I guess, first of all, are there any councilmembers that wish to withdraw their name? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to withdraw my name.
So the list of candidates would be Councilmember Beaton, Councilmember Lohr, and Councilmember We'll just go in order then. Councilmember Beaton, did you want to speak?
I'd like to speak. Thank you. This is a committee that I have served on for the last year. It's something that I've, it's been a real pleasure to serve on this committee and to be able to see how our citizens affect our city in such an intimate way. They are really, the folks that serve on this committee are really a driver of our community, and so it's been such a pleasure to be a part of that and to kind of see how that works. In the last year, I have focused on bringing diversity to the committee and also making sure that the values of this council are represented. Something that I'm really looking forward to continuing is an initiative that Councilmember Worthman and I started just a few weeks ago on the committee to figure out a way to better engage community members in the committee process, meaning how to make sure that citizens' voices are heard at committees where our most detailed and important decisions are first made in our city before they come to the city council. So how to, how to open up a public comment period like we have here in our council chambers, how to make it so that there are citizens who can bring issues to the committee structure. So that's the sort of thing that I'd like to continue. That in particular is a project that I'd really like to see through, at least through the next year, and so I'd very much appreciate the opportunity to serve on that committee again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Lohr?
I'm new to this committee, but I want to bring my perspective of different backgrounds to see if I can serve this community better for the futures and then bring up, to serve the population diversity in this community and also helping the city council working forward. So this is what I'm interested to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. It's been an honor to have the opportunity to serve on this committee, and, I don't think my, is my microphone on?
Push the button.
Is it mine? Okay. Either one. I think I got it. So, I'm still learning the mics. A few things that I think that are really important that I try to help bring to this committee. One is just that this is really the place where we try to invite folks in our community to step up and serve on our boards, committees, and commissions, and, you know, one of the ways that we try to get the word out is really through, you know, through this committee and making sure that people know they have that opportunity. I'm also proud to work on, not only are we trying to add time for public comment period during our committees and commission meetings, but we're also looking at how to help the members of those committees better understand the process in terms of putting something on the agenda. And that's something that we hope to bring. And that's something that we hope to bring forward from this committee because I think that's another opportunity where citizens can really have an impact in helping to bring ideas forward for our consideration. So, you know, that's one thing. I think beyond that, just is the opportunity to serve on this commission again and make sure that we're bringing a work plan to the City Council that you all can get on board with as well. Because I think there's a lot of opportunity in this committee to make sure that we're doing our work, not only to bring new folks in to represent on our boards, committees, and commissions, but to make sure that our boards, committees, and commissions are the very best they can be. So I hope that you elect me to this committee that I can follow through with those problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. And I apologize, I didn't ask before, but were there anybody that wished to add their name to the list of nominees? All right. With that, we will again remind everyone that they can vote for two people. So we'll start with Councilmember Beaton. So by a show of hands, those that wish to vote for Councilmember Beaton, please raise Those that wish to vote for Councilmember Larr, please raise your hand. And those of you that wish to vote for Councilmember Worthman. So, Councilmember Beaton with nine votes has been appointed to the Advisory Committee and Councilmember Worthman with eight votes has been appointed to the Advisory Committee. So congratulations. Thank you. Next, the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center Board. We have two candidates. Again, I'll ask if there's anyone that wishes to remove their name. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates. Seeing none. All right, this is one position that we're filling, so only one vote. And we will start with Councilmember Benjamin. Those in favor of, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Benjamin, did you wish to speak to this?
I would love to.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you for everyone for my first opportunity to address the committee. Entrepreneurship is the biggest reason that I ran for office here in Eau Claire, and I think it's the biggest thing that I have to offer to Eau Claire. My experience in entrepreneurship and entrepreneur support over the last eight years and learning how to help business grow and shape our community has been a big part of my work and professional experience. I've worked closely with the EDC and certain organizations to help grow entrepreneurship here in the Chippewa Valley, and I'd like to continue that trend through the Innovation Center. I think it's a hidden gem in our community that can really offer a lot to the entrepreneurs that know where it is and how to use it, but a lot of people don't. And what I'd love to do is be part of that board, to bring it more front and center as a resource for entrepreneurs to use and grow their businesses and move into the next stage of their businesses and the next stage of our business community here in Eau Claire. So I hope you'll consider me for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President. I have served on the Innovation Center Board this last year and claimed that position through my experience in employment and training and coaching and expected to be able to work more in line with the entrepreneurs. However, I discovered that in that experience, the Innovation Center is now poised, they have commissioned a market study to define the part of our economic community that they want to target, and I am now their new secretary. And I really would like to be able to finish that commitment with the understanding of the direction that they want to head and the various other segments of our community that are vying for that, the innovation portion. So I would ask your support with my experience and would love to work with whoever is on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Christopherson, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to either of the two candidates? Seeing none, we will call the vote, starting with Councilmember Benjamin. Those who wish to vote for Councilmember Benjamin, please raise your hand. Those that wish to vote for Councilmember Christopherson, please raise your hand. Councilmember Benjamin with five votes. Councilmember Christopherson with six votes. Congratulations, Councilmember Christopherson. Moving on to the next, City Council Board of Health. First of all, we have one candidate. Is there anyone that wishes to remove their name?[991.01][991.01](laughter). Seeing none.[993.01][993.01](laughter). Is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none. Councilmember Bergy, did you wish to speak to this?
Well, sure, I will. Thank you, Council President. I guess I've served on the Board of Health for the last year and it's been really enjoyable and informative experience. I enjoyed working with the entire Board of Health and with LISCIA and the Health Department. I've learned a lot about our city and county health department and all the things they do, and I feel like my daytime job of being a counselor dovetails nicely and then also my work with neighborhoods as well and just in the city. So look forward to continuing that work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in regards to Councilmember Bergy? All right, so with that then, I will seek a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for one candidate, Councilmember Bergy. Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Emanuel. So moved. Second, Councilmember Beaton. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. Housing Authority. Again, we have two candidates, Councilmember Christopherson and Councilmember Larr. Does anyone wish to remove their names from the list of candidates? Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none, we will call the vote. I'm sorry. Councilmember Christopherson, did you wish to speak to this nomination?
Thank you, President Weld. Again, I'm feeling a little bit broken record-ish, but because of the Affordable Housing Initiative and our interest as a community on how we serve our citizens that are expensing low income, I had asked for placement on the Housing Authority Commission last year, and I have served one year. I find it to be a very interesting and challenging position, and again, I would like to have one additional year to serve that population. It's complicated in that it's administering federal funding, there's a lot of specific information. I feel like right now, I really have something to offer the council and the city in this position, so I would ask your support.
Thank you. Councilmember Larr, did you wish to speak to this nomination?
Thank you, President Weld. I want to serve in this community because the Housing Authority is working closely with people, low-income families, serving those populations. That's my platform when I run for City Council seat. I want to serve the community, helping them make decisions where the budget coming from and how do we serve this community for what, that's why I'm running for. So I think that I interest in this position, and if you can vote for me, I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to either of the nominees? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. Again, just one position that we're filling, so one vote. Those that wish to vote for Councilmember Christopherson, please show your hands. Those that wish to vote for Councilmember Larr, please raise your. Congratulations, Councilmember Larr.
Thank you.
Next is the Joint Commission on Shared Services Initiatives. We have two candidates, Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Worthman. There are two positions to fill. Is there anyone that wishes to remove their name from the list of candidates? Is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none. Again, there are two positions, so you can vote for two people. Let's see, a cast? Everyone's comfortable with, since there are two positions and only two candidates, I will again ask for a motion. And a second? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. The Library Board, I'm sorry, Landmarks Commission. Presently, we don't have any candidates and certainly would appreciate if there is a council member that wishes to add their name for nomination. Anyone that wishes to serve on the Landmarks Commission? Councilmember Worthman?
This is a point of inquiry. How often does landmarks meet?
One point. Okay. Thank you. First Monday, every? Any other questions? Any other nominations? Anyone wishes to add their name for consideration for Landmarks Commission? Councilmember Emanuel. Sorry.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, President Weld. Sometimes the council will kind of move this to the end of the line and people could either just leave it vacant and it remains vacant, and sometimes people might want to just kind of see what do they have left and if people want to serve. So if that's allowable from procedure, I would suggest that we could consider that to help us move along.
City Attorney Nick, is that?
It would basically be a tabling, and you can certainly do that, take it up at the end and as Councilmember Emanuel said, if at that time there still isn't anyone, it just remains unfilled until someone decides to step forward.
Thank you. So we'll table that, we'll push it to the end, and then we'll certainly return to it. Jumping ahead then to the Library Board. Again, one position, we have three candidates. Is there anyone that wishes to remove their name? Councilmember Christopherson would like to remove her name for consideration. Is there anyone else that wishes to remove their name? Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to add their name for consideration for nomination? Seeing none. Again, it is just one position, and the two candidates are Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Larr. Councilmember Anderson, do you wish to speak to this nomination?
Thank you, President Weld. Yes, I'm interested in serving on the Library Board because I have a true passion for learning and literacy. You can see that from my professional life. I'm a writer and editor. I've spent two and a half years of my life working in libraries. At the same time, I do believe that professional expertise has value, but I also think that one of the beautiful things about public service is that people from all walks of life can bring different gifts to their service on a committee. So the unique gift that I am bringing is my experience as a literary scholar, a teacher, a writer, an editor, and a person who's spent a lot of time working in libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Larr, did you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, President Weld. The reason I want to serve on the Public Library Committee is whenever I seek into America, the public library is part of my main sources that I use in learning English as a second language. So public library is, I think I want to serve there because nowadays serving our diversity populations, and at the same time, they add literacy program in that library, so I want to serve in that, so if I can bring different value to the public library board, I'm a member that will bring in there. So that's why I want to serve there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Larr. Anyone else that wishes to speak to the two candidates? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. Those that wish to vote in favor of Councilmember Anderson, please raise your hand. Those that wish to vote for Councilmember Larr, please raise your hand. Councilmember Anderson, congratulations. Next up is Plan Commission. This one requires a two-thirds vote or eight votes to affirm the appointment. There are again two positions here. Again, we will vote until each appointee has received eight votes. There are three candidates that have expressed an interest in serving. Is there anyone that wishes to remove their name from the list of candidates? Councilmember Bergy. Is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? With that, I'm sorry, Councilmember Larr, would you like to add your name? Is there anyone else that wishes to add their name for consideration or for not? Councilmember Greger, did you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, President Weld. Yeah, my first year on the Plan Commission, I've really been honored to serve on it. I was interested before I was on council as well and often participated in the Plan Commission meetings as a citizen, and I, so it's really kind of where my passion is, and I can handle the long meetings. Last night, we met for almost three hours, and truth be told, I probably made the meeting about 45 minutes longer personally, so people have to be prepared for that as well.[1728.03][1728.03](laughter). So I do, I really appreciate working with the staff and the rest of the commission, and we do have some new staff and are having some turnover in staff, so I think it's an exciting time for the city. And we just recently looked at our, you know, development report where we had a really high valuation of new development in the city last year, and the year before that was a record. So it's really kind of a busy commission, and I recognize and appreciate the responsibility associated with it. We also have some planning efforts that I feel like are in the middle of, that I need to see through. There's the Third Ward Neighborhood Plan, which, you know, is an area that I represent on the council in my district role, so that'll be in front of us this year. Of course, there's the Renewable Energy Action Plan and the Transit Development Plan that are just getting underway. And obviously, affordable housing. And obviously, affordable housing has been something I've been engaged with, and the Plan Commission finds quite a bit of focus necessary on that issue too. So I was hoping to serve at least one more year on the Plan Commission, so I'd appreciate everyone's support.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I bring a lot of experience, having served on the Plan Commission. And I think Councilmember Gregor is correct that there's going to be a lot of activity coming forward, and I think that the city and the Plan Commission will benefit from my experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. In the reports on new building last year, District Four, which I represent, led the new construction, and I would really like to be able to support our neighborhood, the district, in understanding how that impacts our district. I've also been involved in both the Jona Affordable Housing Task Force and the Chippewa Valley Affordable Housing Task Force, and see how critically our city's plan zoning affects the ability to move forward in reasonable ways in creating housing that's affordable across the spectrum. And finally, I think that the Plan Commission is a place where so much of our city is created that this, it's like the theater, and the stage is set in the Plan Commission, and I think that we would benefit from a diversity of voices there. So I would love to serve the community and the council in that role, and would ask for your support.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Lor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason I want to serve on the Planning Commission is that I did not have much experience, but what I had, my experience as a entrepreneur in this community, the building community forward. My business when I built is starting at zero and now I'm comfortable on my business. So now I think that I can bring that experience to this Planning Commission and building this community forward. At the same time, we, I like to look at it and see what is, we can offer as a city council to the community that are homeland population in this community. So that's why I want to serve here, so I can bring my value or experience to this community and to move this community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lor. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the nominations? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, President Weld. I'd just like to speak to Councilmember Christopherson's nomination. I want to lift up her work with, I was interested in serving on Plan Commission because of the affordable housing aspect and a few other reasons, but it's just too much time would be spent. But I think every Affordable Housing Task Force meeting I went to, my colleague, Councilmember Christopherson, was there as well, and she's been engaged in that for the last several months, as well as her work with Jona too, I know, with affordable housing. So I think that's really a valuable insight to put on the Plan Commission, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Right, seeing none. Again, this will require eight votes to be appointed. You can vote for two people. And we will start with Councilmember Gregor. Those in favor of voting for Councilmember Gregor, please raise your hand. Those in favor of voting for Councilmember Klinkhammer, please raise your hand. Those in favor of voting for Councilmember Christopherson, please raise your hand. Sorry. Those that voted for, those that wish to vote for Councilmember Lor, please raise your hand. So we have, on the first time through, two council members, Councilmember Gregor and Councilmember Christopherson, have both been appointed to the Plan Commission. Congratulations. Next up is the Putnam Park Commission. Again, two positions that are available on this commission, and there are three candidates that have passed to be considered. Is there anyone that wishes to remove their name from the list of candidates? Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none. We will again call the vote, and again, you can vote twice. I'm sorry. Councilmember Anderson, would you wish to care to speak to this appointment? I'm sorry, yeah, Councilmember Anderson. I'll get this, I promise.
Yeah, I've been serving on the Putnam Park Commission for one year, and we don't meet frequently, but I've enjoyed, I think we've had one meeting, and I enjoyed being a part of a commission that was both the university and the city working together. It's a fascinating group of people, and I would love the chance to continue doing it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. I happen to live just a couple blocks from Putnam Park, and I, and as a student, when I moved here in 2000, I was able to enjoy the park, so I've had some longevity with, in my relationship with Putnam Park. I think, you know, I've been serving on it this last year, and for many years, probably almost 10 years, I attended as a citizen whenever it met, because it only met like twice a year. And I wish it met more often, and maybe I'll try to instigate that, but I think it's obviously a very important park for our community and for really our state and our university. And another thing that's kind of exciting that's happening this year is that there's a Friends of Putnam Park that's starting up as an independent nonprofit organization. And just for the public's notice, there's a, there's a meeting to kick that off on Sunday, May 5th, at 4:00 PM at the Unitarian Universalist Congregation. And that's being organized by people in the neighborhood and people that live near the park, and so it's kind of an important year, I think, for, to see how the commission and that organization and the broader public can work together to keep protecting Putnam Park. And I guess the last point I will make is that the entire park exists within my district and District Three, so I feel a responsibility in that regard as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, President Weld. I have served a couple years on this commission and thoroughly enjoyed it. A lot of the issues that come forward have to do with invasive species and how we handle those. Some of them have to do with the deer populations and how those issues are looked at. There's also sometimes development issues or looking at the flooding that has occurred in the past. And so from all those different angles, I think I bring a strong environmental advocacy lens to this position, and also, you know, an open ear to the students and those in the Third Ward who frequently use this park. So I hope that you'd consider me for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to any of the candidates? All right, again, two positions, three candidates, and you can vote twice, and we'll start with Councilmember Anderson. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Those that wish to vote for Councilmember Gregor, please raise your hand. And those that wish to vote for Councilmember Worthman, please raise your hand. Councilmembers Anderson and Worthman, congratulations. Next up is the Redevelopment Authority. Again, this requires nine votes to affirm the appointment. There is just one position on this committee, and there are four candidates. Is there anyone that wishes to remove their names from the list of candidates? Councilmember Benjamin and Councilmember Christopherson. Is there anyone else that wishes to remove their name from the list of candidates? Is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none. Councilmember Emmanuel, did you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, President Weld. It's been an honor to serve on the Redevelopment Authority this last year, and it's one of those places where, I have to say, I felt very refreshed and renewed in my ability to serve our community and also to learn from the people who serve. It's a very bright, smart committee who helped me to see our community in a different way, and I appreciate that. And I've been proud of the work that we've been able to do on the Redevelopment Authority this year. We've brought forth some significant projects, most significantly on Block Seven and the Liner Building, and are currently negotiating with some other projects that I think meet the desires and aspirations of our community on affordable housing. In addition to that, I think what's happening is that what I've been able to contribute, I'll say, is that an eye for compassion on negotiations of when property is acquired, sometimes that means that people have to move. And so being supportive of, thinking of the whole picture for people so that if they do move, that they can be set up for success as they continue living in perhaps a healthier and safer home. And thinking about the opportunities that we have here in our community, and I think really being at a special time in our community where we're trying to get our systems to talk with one another around, we say affordable housing, and to me, it really means poverty reduction initiatives. And so the Redevelopment Authority is going to be taking up the Affordable Housing Task Force initiatives and seeing how the Redevelopment Authority can integrate that work into what they're doing. So I would be honored to be able to serve again. I really look forward to being able to go and to be that voice in our community, to try to help take really a systems approach of how we develop our community. The other thing is, you know, and think about serving again for three years, the project that's proposed and slated to go at the Liner Building in Block Seven, just thinking about the stacks concept, there were four distinct choices of what could have been made, and that's what came forward. And I am just so excited to see the innovation and incubation of these small little metal crates and what can happen in our community. And thinking also about, there's some very high-end office space that's also slated to come in, and the increase of salaries for those people who can secure those jobs. We need more higher-paying jobs in this community, and so being able to prioritize that without hesitation is something that I'd like to be a part of.
Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel. Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having served on the Redevelopment Authority during a very exciting time of the redevelopment of North Barstow, I gained a lot of insights into that process. There are a number of things coming forward that will be, decisions of which will have a significant impact on our community. While serving on the Redevelopment Authority, I had the honor and pleasure of serving on the committee with the, one of the earliest exercises in... I'm sorry. Through the City-County Health Department. Yeah, the health impact assessment. And as the Canary District comes forward, that's where that health impact assessment was done. And that will be an important component as far as impacting affordable housing. There's going to be, with the opportunities coming forward for Eau Claire through Redevelopment Authority, there will be opportunities to reexamine our TIF policy. And the implementation of that TIF policy was something I was involved in, and I think my experience will bring, be of great benefit going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the two candidates, either the two candidates? Seeing none. Again, nine votes are required to affirm the appointment, and there's just one position and two candidates. So by a show of hands, those all in favor of Councilmember Emmanuel, please raise your hands. And those in favor of Councilmember Klinkhammer, please raise your hand. Congratulations. The next item is the Revolving Loan Fund Committee. We have one position and one candidate. And I guess, is there anyone that wishes to remove their name from the list? Is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list? Seeing none, I'll seek a motion to cast unanimous ballot. And a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. Congratulations, Councilmember Benjamin. Next up is the Transit Commission. Again, one appointment and one candidate. Councilmember Gregor, did you want to withdraw your name? Is there anyone that wishes to add their name? Seeing none, I will seek a motion again to cast unanimous ballot. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Gregor. And next up is the Utility Appeals Board. Again, one position and no candidates. Councilmember Beaton, would you like to?
I'll add my name to it.
Councilmember Beaton wishes to add her name to the list of candidates. Anyone else that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none. Again, I'll seek, again, one candidate, one position. Seek a motion to cast unanimous ballot. Is there a motion to cast unanimous ballot? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Beaton. Visit Eau Claire Board. Again, we have two positions, two appointments, and then two candidates. Of the two candidates, either of you wish to remove your name from the list? Is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Is there anyone that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none, I will again ask for a motion to cast a unanimous vote. Is there a motion? Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations to Councilmember Benjamin and Councilmember Burge. Visit Eau Claire Tourism and Cultural Arts Grant Program Committee. There are two positions available on this committee and one candidate. Councilmember Anderson, you wish to keep your name on the list? Are there other candidates that wish to add their name to the list? Councilmember Lohr? Councilmember, anyone else besides Councilmember Lohr that wishes to add your name to the list of candidates? Councilmember Worthman?
Nominate Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Councilmember Worthman is nominated. Councilmember Worthman, Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Klinkhammer, Councilmember Klinkhammer, would you like to accept the nomination?
If Councilmember Lohr is interested in serving, I'm fine. I would rather not.
Okay. All right, so we have two councilmembers for two positions. Again, we are on the Visit Eau Claire, I'm sorry, Utility Appeals Board, I'm sorry. We're on the Visit Eau Claire Board. We have Tourism and Cultural Arts Grants, and we have Councilmember Anderson, did you wish to speak to this?
Oh, thank you. I hadn't quite prepared anything for, for this one, but I'm definitely interested in learning more about the intersection of arts and tourism in our community. I come from an arts background, and I'm interested in thinking about it in terms of Visit Eau Claire. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohr, did you wish to speak to this? No. We have two positions, two candidates, is there a motion to cast a unanimous ballot? We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Lohr. Waterways and Parks Commission is next, and there are two positions for that commission. There are three candidates. Are there any of the three candidates that wish to remove their names? Councilmember Christopherson? Anyone else that wishes to remove their name?
Council President, if I could remove my name, but I'd like to nominate Mr. Lohr,
Councilmember Lohr, do you wish to accept the nomination? So presently, we have Councilmember Beaton and Councilmember Lohr, and Councilmember Christopherson and Worthman have removed their names. Is there anyone else that wishes to add their name to the list of candidates? Seeing none. Again, we have two positions and two candidates. I will seek a motion to cast unanimous, and a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Lohr and Councilmember Beaton. We will go back then to the Landmarks Commission, and again, ask if there's anyone that wishes to, Councilmember Klinkhammer wishes to add his name?
Yes.
Is there anyone else that wishes to add their name? Seeing none. Again, I will look for a motion to cast a unanimous vote. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Klinkhammer. I believe we have filled all the positions. Is that correct? Well, again, congratulations to those new commission and board and committee members, and again, thank you for your continued service. Obviously, it is additional time and certainly appreciated by myself and the rest of the council and the community, I'm sure. With that, the next order of business would be in regards to the seating arrangements. And I guess if, if I could make a recommendation in that regard, and I'll speak to it as well, and this was actually an idea or suggestion that came up in conversation with, with, I believe, Councilmember Anderson regarding new councilmembers, and the idea that if there's a way that we can at least afford them the opportunity to be seated next to, you know, an experienced or current, or a councilmember that has served previously, and then also not be placed at the end, where maybe they, you know, again, wouldn't have that support around there, and again, just looking at the idea that they could certainly lean on a councilmember to either side of them and ask questions, and again, get more acclimated to their role as a city councilmember maybe a little bit quicker. Obviously, it's a difficult position to step right into, and I think certainly having someone there next to you can, can, can make that a little, that transition a little bit easier. So the idea would be that we would first draw for seats 2, 4, 6, and 10, even-numbered seats, and the three new councilmembers that have, that were just newly elected, their names would be drawn for those three seats, again, assuring them that they're not seated next to each other and not at the end. Seats 7 and 8, again, thinking forward to our council chambers at City Hall, those seats would then remain unavailable for the drawing of the new councilmembers. Once we've seated the new councilmembers in, in seats 2, 4, 6, or 10, whatever seats is remaining of the even number would be added to the remaining odd-numbered seats, and we would draw names, as we have in the past, for those seats. Are there questions with that or concerns? Comments? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. I think it's a great idea. I think it sounds complicated and complex, and I don't even understand it all, and I think we can totally do that kind of stuff, so let's try it. It's great.
Any other comments or questions? And if you prefer, Councilmember Benjamin.
Thank you, President Weld, and I just want to echo that sentiment and say I think that it would be a great opportunity for me to understand process a little better as I get acclimated to my new role. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and speaking with personal experience too, it wasn't that long ago for me, and I really felt that, you know, having that confidence of knowing that there is that support on either side of me really, really does make a difference. So if there's any, if there's no further questions in regards to the process of the idea of it, again, we will draw for seats 2, 4, 6, or 10 for the three newly-elected Seat 6 will go into the, in with the odd-numbered seats, and I just will point out that where Councilmember Lohr is sitting now will actually be considered seat number eight, and the idea there then that the Vice President of the City Council will sit there, and then when we move to the new chamber, 7 and 8 will still be together as it was in the past. Does that make sense? Kind of? Generally, for those that haven't served at the old chambers, again, 7 and 8, Council President sat in seat 7, Council Vice President sat in seat 8. In order to just make it convenient in the event that the Vice President would have to take the gavel or take the seat, or act in any role, or I guess helping assisting the Council President, it's just convenient to have seat 8 there. If there's no objection to that, we'll go ahead and draw the additional seats. All right. Thank you for adjusting and working with that idea, and again, thank you, Councilmember Anderson, for suggesting, and thank you to staff too for helping with, with trying to come up with a way that, that make, that we can make that work. Again, if, if there's no other questions in regards to seating or the commissions or, or board appointments, I guess we would move to announcements.
Thank you, President Weld. The only announcement I would have is that we have some donated refreshments that are at the table behind here for the new councilmembers and the not-so-new councilmembers to celebrate the new council and our time together. I would remind you that the county board is going to be using this room at 7:00. We've been asked to be out by 6:00 so that they can start preparing the room, but there's probably just a little bit of flexibility on that, so.
And I just have one, a couple of more announcements. You should have this contact information sheet in front of you. If all of you could fill that out before you leave and turn it into the city clerk, that would be appreciated. And again, as, as City Manager Peter has mentioned, we do want to celebrate this event and obviously acknowledge, you know, the fact that we've been elected and trusted, you know, amongst the citizens of Eau Claire, and how much we appreciate that, and how much we look forward to working together, and I certainly carry those same ideas and thoughts. And so, staff and family and friends and all of you that are here with us this evening, please feel free to share. We have some cake and fruit and beverages, so I welcome all of you to participate in that. Thank you. Thanks for getting us through this, and I look forward to our next meeting on Monday.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
Councilmember, there is a second. A motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.